All right, it is 7:01 and time to get the council meeting going. So I'm calling this council meeting to order. Will you all please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Cheryl, will you do real call, please?
President.
Present.
President.
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 Here.
Here.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember O'Gorman.
Okay, motion made by Councilman DeYoung. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Councilman Couch. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I am looking for an approval of the agenda, which is gonna be kind of a duplicate here. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
All right. So I have a...
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinzer and seconded by Councilwoman Cornigay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now the consent agenda, which is quite lengthy, items 1 through 12. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, items 1 through 12.
Okay.
Second.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have a comment on item 5. If we could have the Skagit Conservation District come by at a future meeting to give us a little chat about the great things that they do. I believe in normal non-flood season, Ward 6 has the only contact with Skagit River, and it'd be nice to have the Skagit Conservation District come and talk about all the great things that they do. Thank you.
That's a great suggestion. All right, we'll take that into consideration. I've made a note of it here. All right, so I have a motion by, let's see, it was Councilman Couch, seconded by Councilwoman Cornigay, right? Okay. To accept the consent agenda items 1 through 12. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, um, oh, fantastic, okay. So we actually have two wonderful presentations happening tonight, and the first one's gonna involve our own, Mark Freiberger. So if I could have Mark and Kathleen Davis, who is the Director of Local Programming for Wasdott, Mojereded, Moini, I apologize, who is a local program engineer, and then also Harry Haslam, who is the Associate Local Program Engineer, if we could have you come forward.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Davis, the Director, Wasdott Local Programs, and usually I'm accompanied by Dan Mathis, who's the Division Administrator for Federal Highway Administration. Unfortunately, he cannot be here tonight, but we get the pleasure of roaming around the state once a year and giving out awards. We have this good collaboration where we recognize local agencies in the implementation of federal aid projects. We have four categories, best city, best special director, and best county, best county. And I'm delighted to actually present this award to the city for their Jamison Extension Project. To me, what really stood out for me was the community engagement, the safety benefits, I love roundabouts, and the connection, you know, to your industrial area and your school. That was really the missing link for this community, and so I really applaud you, I think, Mark, your team, Murad, and your team, Harry, for supporting agencies. I know it's tough, and I really would like to applaud you because I think this was the first year in your, we have a program called Certified Acceptance where we delegate that most of the authority under the federal highways to local agencies, and so we kind of go through a period of time, and you were very successful. And so I think the construction management that you did, you know, you and your team was a cost saver, and then fortunate enough to get donated right away, you know, so you actually made this very practical. So congratulations. And we have a poster which describes the before and after, which is a little bit challenging because there wasn't anything there. So you're comparing, you know, land to... And a plaque, and who shall I give the, Mark?
Yes.
Congratulations.
And here, would you like to have?
I would. In fact, I would like my staff to come up after this too. So Julie, Joanne, and Wally, and Jorge, these guys, my staff, these, uh, HWA Lockwood, the Simon project, stay with us from 2008 until this project finally funded by Phil and Bill from 2015, '16. They were there all the time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a second presentation. I'm gonna ask Joanne to come up. So, I'll have a little, okay? So Joanne is a remarkable human being as well as an exceptional employee of the City of Seagullie. Joanne will retire me in June, and she is counting the months. We're not there with her yet, but I'm sure that she and Tom probably have a calendar when they're checking off the days. So we're honoring Joanne tonight, not just because she's somebody who has for three years, one of the safety wellness of our city, three years, and she also volunteers at her church, Family Promise, where she also serves as the Council President. But we are honoring her tonight because of the 25 years, and I want you to count them, 25 years, that Joanne has dedication faithfully made sure that we all have the pleasure of enjoying those flicky little tree lights that hang on our street posts, our beautiful street posts. And so, do you want to come here? Pretty sick, right? And so every year, Joanne has, she puts out, you know, an opportunity for all of us to volunteer, and people do volunteer, although I think there were probably a few years that you and Tom were doing it pretty much on your own, but we won't. So, yes, I did, one year this year. So, anyway, we are just, we're honoring Joanne, and I want to read if it's okay with you, Melissa, you have also given your time. So this year, in addition to myself, also Carl DeYoung, our Councilman Kirk, he served and helped put up the tree branches. Well, actually, this year, Tom and Joanne went out early and put up the tree branches, so all the rest of that had to do with handling lights. And I know it sounds easy, but it is a job, and I had, there were four of us who were working together, and you would think that the four of us would be able to, you know, just whip it out. It was not the case. It was a challenge to get those things hung correctly, and Joanne very particular about all of that. So we, we made sure that we did it exactly as she had asked us to do it, because that's really what beautifies the city, because it's so lovely and helps withstand the windstorms of the, oh, yes, of putting the tree and the lights up. So some of the names that Joanne gave me in her thank you list is her husband, Tom Lazaran, her sister, Kelly Cartile, Lynn Corset, Debbie Allen, Zouine and Lynette, Brett Grisby, Mark Cook is also here, Lindsay Leveney, Rick Lemley, Douglas Hunter, the Seagullie Riding Club, Preceptor, Athlon, Omega, Chapter, Beta, Sigma, Ginger Campbell, Seagullie Conover, Chambers, the City of Seagullie Parks, and Solid Waste Department, which Nathan is here. David Davidson also crowned there, Chief Lynn Tucker, our Seagullie Police Department and Patrol Officers, Tamara Williams, who is also here. And she does a senior crime watch, volunteers, Jim Hawkins of Janice B Industries, and Janice B Industries employees, but I also want to call up Patrick, yeah, because for many years he did get the branches planted at Janice B. And then Melissa Doward, Seagullie Public Program and Program Workers, and we do this all for you, we love you, we believe in yourself, you gave your time and your energy, as I believe, call never complain, especially with just the young woman, maybe, if he helps us, we're doing it, but we have a flag, and I would like to read it. And so this says, "From City of Seagullie, it is presented to Joanne Lazaran. Christmas is a special time to celebrate family, friends, and community. No one has done more to help Seagullie share in the Christmas spirit than our own Christmas elf, Joanne Lazaran. For the past 25 years, Joanne has helped Santa by leading efforts to create the magical Christmas by transforming our downtown into an amazing wonder. Thank you, how blessed we are." Okay, and then I'll call it, I'm gonna call it. I'll make this quick, okay? I just wanted to just, this is from a super rich person, and it's a place that everybody wants to live, set in Christmas, and she does work hard, and she can run fast.
And Joanne, thank you for everything you've done to make our parade a success, for being the one person who I could always count on to do Christmas and do it in such an efficient and beautiful way. Thank you. Your spirit shows all through town.
Thank you. I just want to make a thing real quick, that I wanted to, I'm saying it with the honor, and I couldn't believe this, over the years, the family and Co-Or, and all the Seagullie Chamber committees that I've gone through over the years, it was us as a team that came out, and the cold, the rain, the snow, I truly like the snow, to make sure that we ran on for all, from the whole town. And I just want to take this moment to thank the City Council for your generous donation every year, parade, and to all the virgin that donates the Christmas parade each year so we can make this whole town a great. And I truly believe that our annual light and Christmas parade is, yes, that is, and I believe that our downtown is the whole view, light camp this time of year with the branch and the trees that Nathan has brought up, so we all should be proud of our town. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're moving through this fairly quick. Staff reports.
The only thing I have to report is got the most awesome grandson ever. That's all I've got. For the fire department, I just want to say thank you to Joanne and the team for that amazing parade down there. Guys and gals from the volunteers put the truck in the parade, and they, I think they put 13 or 14 hours of putting those lights on, and they said that was the most attended parade I think they've ever seen in history. People were shoulder to shoulder, and you did an amazing job. The softball girls came in here afterwards and did a potato feed, had their best year ever. They, I think they made $170 last year, and this year they made almost $2,500.
Wow.
So, great job. You're the one that drew all those people in, so. And then, as far as the ambulance updates and stuff, we're going live with the paramedic services December 31st, and wanted to do a shout out to City Council, the mayor, Aaron Berg, Doug with finance, Teresa with hiring, Nathan, Brent, Kevin, Tony with the Building Department, Debbie and crew from Wastewater. It's been a phenomenal team effort from start to finish. In these last few months, we've did what we've been trying to do as a county, I think, for 22 years, and it's finally coming to an end. We got our Department of Health walked through an ambulance onsite review last week and got our license this week. Got a nice letter from Katie Holstein with the Department of Health on what a great job we did. So again, thank you to everybody, appreciate all the time and effort that you've done, and just with one contract we did with the Minnesota Multi-State Contract for Pharmaceuticals, we're already seeing dividends on the savings of that. Some of the medications and stuff we're purchasing by using that contractor between 60 and 90% off of what we would pay anywhere else, so thank you again.
John?
Thank you. So before I get into my little list, I'd like to say, I've worked with Joanne for 12 years, every day, so I already knew how awesome she was. Glad to see her getting some recognition finally. I don't have a lot that's relevant to this meeting, but I would like to point out, the next meeting in January, I'm going to be scheduling a public hearing for the proposed annexation. It's finally got all the paperwork together, and so I'll talk to you more about that at the hearing, but that's explaining what that's about, but you can see, you can anticipate that being on your agenda. Also on the agenda, coming up in the next month or so, it's going to be a couple of long plat approvals. So these are final plat approvals for those that are newer to the council, maybe haven't been through this process. The council passes a resolution approving a long plat, like looking at it in detail, and that's called preliminary plat approval. And then after the council approves that, then the developer can go out and actually build the plat. So you've probably seen a couple of plats where the road's been built and they're ready for, it looks like homes could start going there, but before that can happen, the council has to give a final approval. And it's sort of a formality after staff's already checked off that they've done everything that they were required to do, and then City Council makes a final approval. We typically put that on the consent agenda because it's the second action, like council's already made the big action on it, so you can expect to see that on the consent agenda when that does come around. If you have any questions or concerns about that, let me know, and we can work out any details. And I think that's all I have for you today.
All right, thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say about this award that we received for the Jamison Project tonight, that this is not my award or Public Works' award, it's the city's award. Any project like this has a lot of things that goes into it. Kathleen mentioned that the right of way was donated for this, and that was, that was a huge part of the success of this project, the folks from Hamilton Industries doing that, and also Rothenbuehler was a part of that as well. And so I just wanted to clarify, certainly when someone stands up and receives something like this, it's never a sole effort. The staff here has been critical to everything we've done. I'll pile on Joanne as well. She takes all the front calls for the complaints we get during construction. And Julie, just, you know, I couldn't possibly do the job that I do if she wasn't watching my back every day. David, who couldn't be here tonight, the engineering that he does and the expertise he brings, and Wally, who watches these projects, and Nathan and his crews, and all of the other Public Works operations parts of this are a huge part of that. So this is Seagullie's award, and this is not the first one we got, and I hope it's not the last. We don't do these projects to get awards, we do them because they make sense, and they make the traffic flow work better in the city, and they make life a little more safe and pleasant for the city. And so I just wanted to let you know that. Along the line of projects, we've had a busy year. You've heard me talk about this quite a bit. Fruitdale Project is complete, other than a little bit of painting on the sign base. It's been open to traffic for well over a month now, and working well. It's doing what it needs to do. State Street is done, other than the striping, the weather is preventing us from getting that on. We'll do that as quickly as we can, but it's making a difference already, along with doing things like removing those railroad tracks we've been bouncing over for years. Comes with doing something like that, that no good deed goes unpunished, and now people are driving faster, and so the complaints have changed. But it's a good change to have, and so I'm glad that the railroad was cooperative with that. We have new sewer system in a part of town that was unsued before, due to the foresight of the council and administration. Now that we can offer sewer service to another 22 customers, and there's some other expansion capacity there, and so that's another project that's behind us, and we have some others related to that to do next year in that same area, on Robinson and Borset. And then our new sidewalk path that we have on Highway 20 from Township to Fruitdale is complete and making a difference. There's lots of people using that already, and so it's been one more thing that we've been able to put into our system. We are, of course, we never stop there. If we're not building, we're planning, and David Lee, our engineer, is in the process, so I'm printing plans out today for a lane widening project we're doing on Highway 20 between Holt Camp Road and Hodgins Street. That will provide a center turn lane where it's vitally needed there in front of Life Care and the other businesses along in there. We have close calls nearly every day in that stretch of town, and we don't want to be contributing customers to Life Care if we can avoid it, so we want to get that one built this year. We're doing that one in cooperation and mostly funded by Skagit County with new behavioral health stabilization campus that is to be constructed, the site of Life Care. So we're looking forward to getting those projects done, as well as some sidewalk and ramp improvements around town, various locations where we've got barriers to handicap users of our sidewalk system. And we've been busy working, Nathan's crew in particular, have been busy with the demolition and getting the site ready for the new library project, which I'm sure Aaron will be talking about more tonight, so that's, that's coming along. In addition to that, we've got other planning projects we're doing, but that's enough to talk about tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Aaron?
As far as the library project, we're continuing to dig out at the site. I think we shared at prior council meeting, it appears that maybe over the years at the old Feed Barn, there was a practice of opening the floorboards and dumping various material down there. Quite an interesting stew of stuff, so we're probably gonna be in the neighborhood of 800 tons of material that we'll have hauled out, over excavated, looking for clean soil. And we've got a tank there that was rumored to be molasses, which was kind of exciting. We let the lab know to test for sugar, came up for diesel instead, would have preferred the sugar, but we've got a few thousand gallons of some very watery diesel, diesel-y, sludgy material to give them as well. So definitely some additional costs on the cleanup side. Travis is continuing to do the loading, and we're getting the material offsite. Of course, everything we haul away at this point will necessitate bringing in new material, so it's a two-for-one type deal in that regard, or a one-for-two, however you want to look at it. So we'll keep you posted. There's a lot going on, probably a lot more I could say, but I think I'll just remind you that the city's annual employee recognition lunch is next Friday at high noon at Station 1. If you can all make it, and Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you. Doug?
I just have one thing tonight on the dais at each of your stations. I have some information on a program we're implementing with US Bank. It's called Positive Pay. And what Positive Pay does, it's a fraud prevention application that we do that makes sure any checks clearing our bank accounts are authorized and they match up with the check we actually sent out the door. So we have the capability currently in our banking software, we just have to turn on the switch and make it happen. And we're also working with bias software, financial software, which can speak to single point Positive Pay, so that staff time is very minimal as far as uploading information. There's just one more step that we can do to protect city assets and give comfort that we don't have any fraudulent activities from outside the organization coming in on our banking information like that. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Jared?
Nothing to report.
All right. Jermaine?
Just thank you again, Joanne, for everything, work of thee, and everyone have a peaceful Christmas. That's it.
All right, thank you. Brenda?
I have nothing to add.
All right. You're set and ready to go. Carl?
No better time than the present. Just, Joanne, thanks so much for all the hard work you've done, and also doing it with such a wonderful, effervescent personality. It just draws to people to help build the community. Thank you for all your service and hard work. It's gonna be sad to see you. Did want to mention that the first of the year, we're gonna have quite the shakeup in the Skagit Transit bus routes, and I was hoping that we could have Skagit Transit to come and give us a little talk about that. We see that Route 750 is going to move from Fridays only to Tuesday only, so that's gonna change some folks that depend on that bus route from upriver to come down to medical appointments and food banks and other services. Also, the 305 is eliminating some routes near Big Rock and through Clear Lake going up Mud Road, Mud Lake Road, excuse me, and so that's gonna have an impact with folks. And also, the Route 300 has a significant change happening, it's becoming more of a circulatory route, and linkage to other routes will become important if you're headed out of town. So as they say in the technology world, disruptive change is happening, and some change is good, but it looks like we're going to be losing that one-seat ride if we wanted to go from here to Chuckanut Park and Ride or other places, and it really has an effect with folks upriver that seek services here and seek to do business here in Seagullie. So just wanted to alert folks of those changes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carl. Judith?
Well, I just want to say a big thank you. I made a call last night because people were speeding down Cook Road like crazy, and I got really upset because I was walking my dogs. And of course, walking, I couldn't keep up with any of them and give any liable, you know, and all I could say was what I saw. And I've, I got, after talking to the 911 person, I got two, kind of two, agencies calling me back, you know, explaining that, that, you know, they appreciated the heads up, and then of course, the chief's person said, you know, our guy can't be out there chasing the trucks all the time, and I said, I know that. You're not telling me anything, I don't know. But, but it was nice. It was very nice that both those agencies, I think it was probably the sheriffs and the, or the, or maybe even the State Patrol, didn't catch the first one. I did catch the second one, it was definitely the locals.
All right. Thank you. Paula?
Well, not only do I feel like we're honoring our favorite Joanne, our little else, but, you know, Nathan is there lighting the tree on Saturday evening. The volunteer fire department's truck was absolutely fantastically gorgeous. Now, that said, I'm sorry, but you didn't win this year, not because it wasn't, in my opinion, the best lit display there, but I think our judges this year were trying to spread it around a little bit, and they did pick another group, which really had, you know, was kind of nice in that somebody else got honored, but just to let you know, in my opinion, you guys always are number one there. And I know you have one guy that really does all the design, and please let him know, I appreciate everything he does. Today, I had a phone call from the Mount Vernon Downtown Association, they do a lighted parade as well, and they were already checking to make sure of our dates for our parade for next year because the 1st of December falls on Sunday, which they're... for next year because the 1st of December falls on Sunday, which their parade generally falls on the first Sunday, but they wanted it to be the day after ours because some of the people who participate like to decorate for our parade and then go over and do the Mount Vernon parade as well. So, this will be up to them, because we're still going to do it on the first Saturday. But Nathan, Joanne, thank you so much. To everyone else, including the Grinch, I want to say thank you as well. The Hooliville celebration was the best attended ever. You are so right in that. I could not believe how many people were on the sidewalks. I do attribute a lot of that to the fact that it wasn't raining, that the wind wasn't blowing, and yet I also think we just have noticed, you know, unless it's a really nasty night, an increase in people's participation. Redeemer Church across the street from the Chamber did a beautiful job of moving kids through the activity portion of it and getting their faces painted, and they had little stripes on the floor telling them where to go. And Chief Tucker's group, thank you. Also, Chief Klinger was not the Grinch, even though that's the way it was reported in the paper. It would have been difficult for him to be our grand marshal and the Grinch at the same time. But the picture I got of him with Charlotte and Aaron and Bob Stanley driving the car was great, and he looked really pleased, and we were really pleased to have him. So, let the chief know we appreciated him for that as well. And in general, I just want to thank the community for their support of our events. It's really a lot of work to put events on, and every group that works on an event knows just how much work goes into it. We spend months planning them, and yet I always feel it's kind of like a wedding. We spend all this time planning it, and then in a couple hours, it's all done and over, and you're just kind of going, "Ah." So, thank you all. And thank you Beta Sigma Phi for your great job on the breakfast with Santa. I think we could have probably had Santa there a little bit earlier for you, but other than that, you guys did a great job, and thank the Hamptons too for their donation of the pancakes, the syrup, and the sausages as well. So, and thank the city for the donation that helps us get everything done downtown. Those lights that go up on the poles, we buy those every year and throw them away every year, but it's not efficient to try to untangle them and save them for a year, so we do buy very cheap ones for this purpose. But yes, that's one of the ways that your money gets spent. So, thank you.
Okay, well, a lot of thank yous tonight, and I think it's well deserved because we do have a great community here, but we also have a great staff that we work with. And I think Mark said it eloquently when he was talking about that if it wasn't for the individuals supporting each other, the different departments, the people who work within those departments, things wouldn't get done. We're a small community, small staff, and we do some remarkable things, some remarkable projects with the staff that we have. So, I think the thanks that has been shown here tonight is appropriate. I do want to also extend a very Merry Christmas, and I hope it's a safe holiday for everyone. And I do want to remind the council that because this is our last council meeting for this year, that our first council meeting will actually be a work session, and it's on January 2nd. So, just so you know, so, yeah, so January 2nd. So, it'll be in the public safety training room. So, that's about all that I have to say for right now, so I will close the reports and open up public comment. It is 7:36. Is there anyone who has public comment? If so, come forward. Please give your name and your address, and try to keep it within three minutes, please.
My name's Scott Skamhorn. I live in Bellingham, Washington, and I grew up in Cedar Woolley. I'm here to try to get bikes allowed at the Cedar Woolley Skate Park. I just feel we're trying to bring the community together. It's a lot like snowboarding and skiing. It used to be a lot more split down the middle, and a lot of my friends are skateboarders, and we're all just trying to go do the same thing. I'm actually a sponsored bike rider, and I travel all over the world to ride bikes, and we're all going to New Zealand to ride bikes, and this is just one of those places that if we allowed bikes at the skate park, we could bring the community together, we could bring more people in, we could have events there. A lot of people would come and ride this, and it is one of the only skate parks with lights. So, when I work till 5:00, I get off, and Cedar is one of the only parks I could come ride at, and it'd be really sweet if I could ride it and not have my bike taken away. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name and address in about three minutes.
My name's Jeff Perkins. I live in Anacortes, and I'm here with Scotty for the same reason, to try to get bikes allowed in the Cedar Woolley Skate Park here. I've been riding BMX bikes for over 20 years here in the Skagit Valley, and it's one of the main things for my life is my passion for riding bikes. And I've made basically all of my friends from through bike riding, meeting at the local skate parks here in Skagit Valley, lifelong friends. And we attribute that to having our passion for, our common passion for bike riding, being how we met, and we really appreciate all of our friendships, and we all get together at the other skate parks, all the, all the other nearby skate parks, Oak Harbor, Burlington, Anacortes. On most weekends, we all meet up at some of those spots, and the one here in Cedar Woolley is really nice, and we'd really enjoy it and appreciate it if it could be one of those places where we could all meet up together and enjoy practicing our sport and our hobby and our passion, and be able to enjoy our friendships and doing what we love together. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Name and address?
James Van de Kamp from Bellingham, Washington. I'm here for the same reason, just trying to get bikes allowed at the skateboard facility here. For us, we've ridden it here and there, and one of the bummers about it is we'll be riding, and much of the kids will come out of the woodwork, out of the neighborhood, and they'll be, they'll see us there, and they'll be all excited. They'll come ride with us, and we'll be like teaching them how to do, how to roll into the bowl, or whatever they want to learn, kind of. But then they'll get shut down by the police. And they're just doing their jobs, it's understandable. But it'd be nice for the town if the kids that ride bikes in Cedar would have somewhere to go, because for us, we all have cars, we all have jobs, we can go other places. But for the local kids, like, they can't ride their bikes to Mount Vernon to ride the skate park. And my ankle on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Familiar faces. Harold Reitler, Cedar Woolley, 1207 Jamison Street. Two avenues I want to hit tonight. One is, I want to back up some comments you made a few minutes ago, reference to our fire department. I put 37 years in with the department. We're proud of this department. It's well-known statewide. I've gone of good many different means over the state. May have nothing but good word for Cedar Woolley. Well-known. Our police department, top dogs. We've got a department we could be very, very proud of today. We've come a long way in the last few years. When I came on the department, I was number four man. Look where we're at today. Many, many, many more. Very well-trained and very well-respected. Over the years, anytime there was a vacancy in Cedar Woolley, we had people from the other departments applying. That coupled up, the sheriffs got in trouble because they applied one time. Sheriff didn't like it because they wouldn't leave his department, come over here. Also, the nice presentation here tonight for our engineer, the engineer department. When I get through, I don't mean to throw coal wall on them. I think it's great that we get that kind of recognition. I know they're working real hard, but I guess I'm going to try to beat a dead horse to death tonight a little bit, too. This stop sign situation that I brought up some time about ago in Jamison Street, Fourth and Jamison. I don't think we have the capabilities of getting a traffic count, at least if they have. I've never seen it around town here. So, I turned it on myself to donate a little bit of time, made my own traffic count. I figured that the time when the school got out is when the heavy traffic would be possibly in that intersection of Fourth and Jamison. Why we need that stop sign, I never could figure out. I've sat and tried to figure it, I can't. So, I went down, and I sat there for one hour, from 2:00 to 3:00. School gets out at 2:30, which means that intersection, that's where the heavy traffic is going to be on it. I was surprised when I found out there was no north and south traffic in that intersection. It's all east and west. First day I was down there, we had 201 cars going east and west. We had 34 cars going north and south in that intersection at period of time. The following day, went back and did a recheck. That particular day, I had 161 cars going east and west on Jamison, and going north and south, I had 11 going south and 14 going, eight going the other direction, which tells me that there's no north and south traffic in that intersection. Again, we go off Third Street, which was the stop signs on Jamison. We go one block, and the only thing I can figure is that somebody from the school apparently must have complained. They did have a little problem. First night, or first afternoon I was there, two school buses met in the intersection. Ah, no way they can go through at the same time. One school bus was going south on Fourth and going to turn and going west on Jamison. Here was a second school bus in the intersection at the same time. The bus that was going east, or west, excuse me, that bus had to wait, it stopped in the middle of the intersection, so the other school bus could go through, then he made his turn, which tells me that probably on part of the school district, they don't take the big bus off of that particular run there, turn somewhere else.
Harold, you're over your three minutes. Can you maybe wrap this up in about 30 seconds?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Could I have about 30 seconds?
That's, I'm giving you 30 seconds here.
Thank you. I researched this so-called ordinance on the stop signs, or any stop sign, any traffic sign out there. I couldn't find anything. I have a friend attorney over in Mount Vernon, and I went to by him. I said, "Well, you guys got a better way of finding things, maybe you'll find it." He could not find anything in there that says that that has been changed. In the past, it's been that city council decides when and where these signs go, except if it's an emergency. If it's an emergency, like a one- or two-day thing, police department, engineers, or whatever can do it. But basically, you people decide where the stop sign is going to go. Thank you for the extra time, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay, it is 7:47, and I am going to close public comment.
I don't know if I should say something now, since we had, since we had the advice of the cyclists come up, and I know this isn't the first time, I think this is like the second or even third time that you guys have been here, but I was just curious. I know that there was talk about a park for...
And actually, Nathan holds a park meeting, and there's one coming up in January, and they are talking about a BMX park. So, that's, we will never allow bikes on the skateboard. We just, we won't, we won't ever do that. That's not what it was built for. However, we are looking at doing a BMX park here in Cedar Woolley. And when's that meeting, Nathan?
The 23rd, right here at 5:15.
Okay, so you can check our website, so the 23rd, 5:15.
Are we talking about a concrete skate park?
Well, why don't you come and hear what they have to say, and maybe Nathan will let you give some input or ask questions or whatever, but we will never allow it out here. So, Jermaine is absolutely right, this is the second time that people have approached, but we just won't do it. So, I'm going to move on. There is absolutely no unfinished or new business, which is great. Are there any questions regarding informational items? All right, then I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I wish everyone a safe and peaceful holiday season, and I move to adjourn.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we are adjourned.